Come to the meeting tonight. We're having a, this is a joint meeting with the Ada County Commission and the CUNA City Council and the mayor. We'll have Chris Ingles, the clerk. Would you call a roll to get this meeting started off?
Yes, sir. We'll call Commissioner Daley.
Here.
Commissioner Back.
Here.
Commissioner Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Council President McPherson.
Here.
Mayor Steer.
Here.
Well, good. I guess we can get started then. We appreciate everyone being here. This is a, it's an honor for us to be here as a county commission to have a joint meeting with CUNA and the mayor and the city council of CUNA. CUNA is an important one of our, one of our cities, and we really appreciate everyone being here. It's going to be as special evening as we're going to honor a, a former member of this, this body, or this organization. We're starting off tonight. We have our clerk with us, and he's going to give a, sort of an overview of how we do our budget process. And we have with us the Honorable Trent Triple. He's the Ada County Clerk. And by the way, just for your, for your information, he has a sort of linkage to, to Mr. Fisher here because he's a retired fighter pilot. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Yes, Bernie and I knew each other a long time ago. And I'm sad he's not still with us. But thank you for the time. I thought, on the request of the commissioners, I would just go through real quickly what kind of our budget process is at the county. I maybe open up for questions for folks if that's okay with the board. We start off, first off, our fiscal year is just like the cities. It's, goes from October 1st to September 30th. Our budget cycle starts in January-ish. I say ish because there's a lot of moving parts with it when we're forecasting revenues, which are property tax, internal revenues that we have within the county, as well as sales tax and liquor tax revenue that's shared from the state. But in January, I meet with the commissioners. They kind of give some guidance as to their priorities for the upcoming year. And then I go out and I meet with each elected official. I give them an opportunity to provide their inputs on the budget. And then we collectively put that budget together and then present it to the board. The board then goes through a lengthy deliberation process validating and, and many times questioning some of the requests that come from the elected officials, which is their job. And then the sole goal in that is by the end of June, we have agreed upon a balanced budget. By statute, we can't spend more money than we take in. And so there are some trade-offs that often take place based off the revenue forecasts and the taxes. And at that point, based off the needs of the county, the commissioners will decide if they are going to cut taxes, increase taxes, and, and all those important decisions take place in the deliberation process. We present the, the budget to the, to the public in July, and then in August, we finalize while we tentatively pass that budget in, in August, which means it can't go up any farther, but there's still an opportunity if the commissioner's so pleased to decrease the budget. And then in September, the last week of September, by statute, we are required to adopt the final budget. At that point, as a county, what we do is we take in all of the other budgets from every other taxing district, to include CUNA, and we set the levy for the state. And what that means is we validate their budgets, make sure that they're not pushing up against levy ceilings, and that they've stepped through all of their hoops for budget presentations, public presentations, and all of the same process that everyone else in a tax, taxing district is required to go through. And then, as the county, we submit what's called an L2. It's a word that doesn't mean anything to anybody but us, and it's a major headache. But we have every taxing district that falls within Ada County to include schools, cities, cemetery districts, water districts, all kinds of stuff, and we send that to the state. And then they're the ones that validate all of that. And then, at that point, we start collecting taxes. And by the end of the year, in, in December, we'll collect those taxes. Last year, we collected roughly a billion dollars in taxes. Of that, the county, its portion is about 220 million. And then we are a pass-through, and we make sure the rest of the taxing districts get their portion of the budget. And then they spend it according to their statutes within their taxing districts. That's an overall process that we go through every year. It's very robust. The commissioner, the chairman and the commissioners are fond of saying that we get along really well in Ada County. We do, but there is still a very deliberative process that we go through to make sure that we're getting, in the words of the chairman, the best government for the least amount of money, and making sure that we're using the taxpayer dollars appropriately. Some highlights just from our budget in the county so that you can kind of guess, get an idea of the struggles that we have of our entire budget, which this year was 374 million dollars. Public safety makes up 46% of that budget. That includes the sheriff, EMS, all of those things that fall within public safety. General government makes up about 26% of it. Judicial services, about 18%. And then we also have recreational and sanitation, health and welfare portions that make up a much smaller portion of that. So our overall budget primarily goes, well, almost half of it goes to public safety. Of the expenses that we have, personnel expenses make up of that 374 million dollars. 243 million dollars of that is just personnel, right? So people in, in seats, in cars, in patrol cars, the salaries for those, and all the expenses associated with keeping those personnel doing the county's business, that is the primary expense that we have. We have about 99 million dollars in operating expenses. And then this last year, as an example, we had about 30 million dollars in capital expenses. Those are building projects, one-time expense things that we primarily fund through savings. For our taxes, of the 374 million dollars, our revenue basically is made up of property tax, which is about 165 million dollars. We have department revenues, and that's revenue that we bring in through fees and fines and services that we provide to the citizens. That's about 103 million dollars. We have other government agencies. That's a, it's really a misnomer. It's additional taxes essentially, and it's a revenue sharing that we get from the state in the form of sales tax revenue, as well as liquor tax revenue and some other smaller ones. And then we used roughly 30 million dollars last year in savings that we were able to accumulate over the, the last several years to, again, pay for one of those one-time expenses. As an idea, you see it on the handouts here that were passed out. In next year's budget, about fi, medium home value assessed about 438,000 dollars. For Ada County's portion of taxes, you'd be paying 556 dollars. And so that's our portion of all of the property taxes that would be paid towards the budget. We have, if you're ever interested and want to geek out on this stuff, on our website, we have what we call a Budget Explorer, and it'll go down to the penny of where your taxpayers are getting spent. You can find the line item and the department within our county, and what their budgets are and what they're spending their money on. It's a really neat tool if you want to find out where the money's going, but that's a quick overview of, of the county budget and what we're looking at for this next year. Chairman, commissioners, anything to add?
Okay, thank you. No, we will take questions at the, after the meeting concludes, and I think it'd be appropriate to have the mayor of the, of CUNA give us a little overview of the CUNA budget process.
Well, thank you. I guess I didn't prepare anything for that, but yeah, we do the same thing. We usually start having our, we have an October fiscal budget, so just starting into the 2023, 2024 budget, we usually start having discussions on budget, getting all the staff to bring in and, and put together the budgets that they need to have for the various departments. And then we include our budget process in our council meetings. So we do that so that they're part of the public record and not separate meetings so that people that come to council meetings can be a part of that and hear what's going on. And then, same thing, we have our budget hearing in August and hopefully get everything all approved and, and running through. But yeah, we're, we're the same deal. We don't, we don't want to accumulate any debt, and we are required not to, so we don't. So, a little shorter version than what Trent gave, but...
Well, great. And when you submit your, your proposed tax levies to us, then we certify the tax levies, and then we collect the taxes for you, and then in December, and then we pass it forward on the, the monies that you, that you collect for, for CUNA to you to spend as, as, as you have decided is, is in the best interest of the city of CUNA. And so, anyway, anyway, keep track. If anyone here has any questions about anything we talk about, we're going to have a question and answer after we conclude, conclude the meeting. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just a couple of amplifications for, as both of the gentlemen have just said, the public is engaged in this process, and it's really important that, that's why they gave the timelines, the mayor in terms of the city council, the clerk in terms of the county budget. And so now's the time during the entire year to be engaged in the budget process. Not only how we're spending the money that's been appropriated for this year that started on October 1st, but planning for the next fiscal year that will start on October 1st of 2024. So be engaged in that process during the spending, as well as the creating the budget for the next year. And there, back to what the clerk said, there are 41 taxing districts in Ada County. So you need to look at your tax bill, look at the taxing district jury, and, and then you can engage with those taxing districts as, as they go through the process.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Commissioner Davidson.
Yeah, 41 taxing districts, and kind of interesting factoid, this year, one of them forgot to send us their paperwork, so they don't get any tax dollars for the year. That was just a small cemetery district. I'm sure they're going to be fine, but these are deadlines at every, and it's not just, again, cities and counties, cemetery districts, library districts, all these things get the property tax dollars, but they have to send their information to us so that we can get them the tax dollars. It's, it was just interesting that one of them forgot to send it in. But I did want to say that these processes are public, and, you know, when we're coming up with our budget, the public's invited to come and give testimony, but we hardly get anybody. And I'm sure CUNA is probably similar. And I get it because the budget is, is a pretty complicated process, and it's tough to know which departments are spending the money in which way. I mean, it takes a lot of engagement to kind of figure that out. So I just, just wanted to give a plug to, you know, if you are interested in getting involved in your city or county's budget process, just show up, send the commissioners or the councilmen emails, ask questions, because people showing up can have an impact. They can point out things that maybe elected officials miss.
Absolutely. I want, I want to also point out that the city and the county are on the exact same timeline as articulated in the, in, in state law. We have to have certain things done by certain times, and, and there's, there's one real serious deadline, and that is if the county and the city, if we don't have our budget complete and approved by a certain timeline, we can't collect any property tax. That's the little hammer that's kind of over our head. The one, we have to have a balanced budget, and two, we have to submit our budget timeline, timely. If we don't submit it timely, we can't collect any property taxes to pay for the budget. Is there any other discussion or issues, if anyone in the city council would like to comment, or any, anyone else? And we'll take questions at the end of the meeting. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yes. And I'd also like to reiterate that it is a public process, and if anyone's ever uncertain about when those timelines are, please feel free to contact the city. We'll let you know all the timelines and when, when things are going on and what's going on. And yeah, the public hearing we hold in, in August is very important to, to get that done and meet that timeline so that we don't go a year without having any funding to operate.
Yeah, that, that would be difficult, wouldn't it? Anyway, well, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the, our assessor's office. I want to congratulate the, our assessor, Rebecca Arnold, and the mayor, Joe Steer. They're working to create a situation where you can do your registration for your motor vehicles right here at City Hall. Anybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll have Rebecca give us an idea of what we're doing, and then follow it up with, with Joe, and how you're kind of working together to get that done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, and Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to give you an update on this. These conversations began several months ago. The city of CUNA has made it very clear that it's a priority for them to provide these services to the citizens here. So my office has been working with the city and with Sheriff Clifford and ITD to make this happen. The city of CUNA is providing the facility for us, and as soon as that facility is ready, we're ready to go to get, to get it up and running. I don't know what the timeline is for that, but I know Sheriff Clifford and, and Mayor Steer have also been working together with ITD, and perhaps the mayor can give us a, a better idea on what the status of providing the facility is.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's been quite a process. You don't realize that there's so many agencies involved in that, ITD and the assessor's office and the sheriff's office and, and everyone involved there. So that was actually a little eye-opening to me to find out that we had to go through all those different channels. But it's been great working with every, everybody. Assessor Arnold has been very helpful through the process, and Sheriff Clifford has been great and very supportive with it. So we did actually just finalize last night getting the process started on looking at what it's going to take to get a building up and running. We did that very quickly with our police department, and I think we can do that again with a, a building for this. And it should be right on this campus, so easily accessible for folks.
Well, that's great.
Just as a, as a amplification, do we know exactly all the services at this point that will be provided in that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Daley, the plan initially at least is to have DMV title and registration on board, and then Sheriff Clifford is working with us to get the driver's license facilities added to that as quickly as we can. And I want to give a shout out to my DMV manager, Clayton Hall. He has really taken the, the lead on, on working with the city to get this done, and really appreciate his efforts in that regard.
Well, great. Maybe we can have Sheriff Clifford give us a little update on what the timeline is, if there's a timeline for expanding, because you need to understand both the driver's license and the motor vehicle registration and titling. That's a state function. But the state, how many of you have dealt with the state? They take a long time to do things. And so they've delegated that to the counties to, to actually do that function. And so both driver's license and the motor vehicle registration, we do for the state of Idaho, so...
Oh, Mr. Chair, it's important to point out this little factoid that, you know, driver's licenses are the sheriff, driver's registrations are the assessor. It takes you a while to, to figure that out. You just assume it's the same government department, but it's actually two completely separate departments.
Go ahead.
Chairman and commissioners, thank you. So what we're doing as far as driver's license goes is we're going to try a, somewhat of a trial run in STAR because they have infrastructure already set up. They already have DMV set up there. So it's all set up in STAR for us to plug into it. We're just trying to figure out how to logistically make that work. And if it does work, then we know we can give access to CUNA down here. So we, in driver's license, it's a different animal than DMV, and we have to make sure that we're using taxpayer money appropriately by using the facility that we provide. So we've had satellite offices before where nobody used them. I know people would use them here, but the state has kind of an algorithm of this is when, this is how many driver's licenses you should issue per day, basically, for it to be affordable. So we really think that once we get STAR up and running and kind of have a little snapshot of how that's going to go, we will then have the, you know, the path paved for CUNA. So I don't have a timeline on that yet. We're still working with STAR to, doing constructions and things like that right now.
Good, but at least that's in the, that's in the works. And, and so we'll, we'll get that figured out as to how it can be integrated into the registration and titling division that will be set up, I guess, in the near, in the near future here in, in CUNA. All right.
Yeah, we'd like to make it so you never have to drive to Boise again. Wouldn't that be nice?
Well, more importantly, not to, you won't have to drive to Meridian. Okay, well, thank you. Now, keep track of your questions because we will have a question and answer session at the end of the, at the conclusion of this meeting where we can answer as many questions as we can for you. Next up, we are, we are happy that we're, we're able to cooperate and work with the city of CUNA for our EMS. And we have our director of our EMS, Sean. Would you like to come up and tell us about the co-location that we have with the CUNA Fire Department?
This is Sean Rain. He's, he's the director of the Ada County EMS.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, mayor, members of council, thank you for having me out today. I also have Chief Lawrence, the chief of the CUNA Fire Department, with me. Back in November of 2021, we began co-locating with the CUNA Fire Department. It was kind of an interesting time because it was just before we started the remodel process out there. So we moved out into the building for about a month and then moved into portables while we were doing the remodel, but that's all complete now. I'm happy to report, and Chief Lawrence and I talk quite a bit, but things are going very well out there. The, the crews are getting along really well. Most people don't know this, but our department moved to what's called an ABC shift schedule in January 1st of last year, which means that you have the same six people working in CUNA now as opposed to multiple different people rotating through the station. And what that does is the relationship between the CUNA firefighters and the EMS folks just really strength, strengthens because, you know, they sit down and eat dinner together, they're running the bulk of their calls together, they spend a lot of time, you know, on those shifts, their, their long shifts that they work. So things are going very well. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Chief Lawrence?
Just to add to what you're saying, we're able to provide a responsive to the citizens.
And I have provided this sheet that's in front of you. This is two years' worth of data, so this is just prior to, to the co-location. This goes back to October 1st of 2021. You can see over that two-year period, the average response time was nine minutes and 39 seconds. That's the, the time from when we received the dispatch to arrival on scene, so it's broken down a little bit differently. But that thin blue line that you see trending downwards, that is the indication that our response times have been improving over that two-year period. So things are getting better. Chief Lawrence and I talked, a lot of that is because now you've got the engine and the squad and the station and an ambulance, and so it, it improves the response reliability. The chance that we're going to have a unit available to get on scene has increased since the, the co-location began. That's a total number in the two-year period of 3,503 EMS-only incidents. This doesn't count fire responses. The next page is just broken down by hour, and so your green bar is there, the number of patients that we've had in that two-year period, and then as you go from left to right, those are the hours of the day. And so you can see in the middle of the day, we're a lot busier. The blue line is our average response time, and in the middle of the day is when we have our best response times, when everybody's up and around. The next page is what's called rolling response time. And so if you think about an EMS or a fire response, we get the bell, we have about a minute to, even if you're in your bed asleep, you have about a minute to get dressed and be going out the door. So this, this blue bar and these times are only that time from when we get out the door and to arrival on scene. And so you can see we do really well with that. Medic 33 is the, the ambulance that is stationed in CUNA. Just about three weeks ago, we are, we began co-locating at Meridian Station 7, which is on Amity between Eagle and Locust Grove. So Medic 37 is giving us a really good second-in response. So if the ambulance has gone out here, we have an ambulance much closer now than we've had in the past, so that's a, that's a great thing, too. And then finally, on the last page, just kind of gives you a breakdown by weeks of the year on how many responses we had in each timeframe. So with that, things are going really great. I can report, you know, certainly, as Chief Lawrence said, my crews love to be out here. The, the six people that are out here, they get to choose their station by seniority, and the people that are working out here chose to come out and work it at the CUNA Fire Station, so they're really enjoying it. So with that, I, I thank you for having me out here, and I'll certainly address any questions at the very end.
All right. Well, well, thank you, and I think it's, it's commendable, and we need to, to give recognition that we have, we're, we're working cooperatively, cooperatively together, because when we do that, we, we serve the public much better. We're working cooperatively with the CUNA Fire Department. As I recall, wasn't it just about a year ago that you had on your, on your ballot a, a bond to, to expand your fire department, to build a new building? Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And it was voter-approved, so we got the bond.
Approved, and it was approved by two-thirds of the voters. I remember having a, a, the sheriff and I had a, had a booth over here in front of Ridley's on your Oktoberfest, and the fire department had some people there talking about the bond, and you were getting more attention than we were. So anyway, it's, it's just great to have a cooperative organization like, like we do where you can get, get, you, the folks here in, in CUNA can have a good, solid EMS services cooperating with the, with the fire department. And just hold your questions, and if you have any questions on, on the, the arrangement and so forth, we'll, we'll take questions at the end of the meeting. Thank you, thank you. Did you have anything? Mayor, did you have anything?
No, I, I appreciate the cooperation and I, you know, the, if, if the ambulance is, is busy, firefighters are also medically trained, so they can intervene and, and do life-saving techniques while we're waiting for the second ambulance to get here. And now that that one's closer, that's that much better, so certainly appreciate all that.
Absolutely. And we, and we, the, the other ambulance station is how close to CUNA and to CUNA neighborhoods?
It's, the, the next one is at Meridian Station 7, which is on Amity between Locust Grove and Eagle, on Lake Hales, sorry.
Yeah, and I think that, that is an indication of how we in Ada County, we have a cooperative agreement with all of our first responders. We have it with our sheriff's department. If we have, if we have an incident in, in CUNA, we have people converge, converge on CUNA from, from Meridian and from the state police. If we have an incident in, in, in Meridian or here, we have a cooperative agreement with each other, and particularly when it comes to, to medical and to, and to the, to the EMS, and we, we thank you for it. Hold your questions till the end, and we'll, then you can ask any questions you want to, to either your fire chief or to our, our EMS chief. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, this is at the request of the, of your mayor here. He, because you had, a year ago, you had a bond up for the expansion of your fire department, correct? And it's been recognized, and we need to, to make sure that we make it clear that the law does not allow us to advocate one way or the other, but we can give facts. And so several weeks ago, the Ada County Commission voted to put on the ballot an expansion of the Ada County Jail. And it's the first time that's been done since when, 92 or 93? And as you all are aware, Ada County has grown significantly in that period of time, and the sheriff is here and is, and wants to tell you the, tell you a good, a good version of the, the reason and only the facts. He can't advocate, but he can give facts. Sheriff?
Thank you. Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, Mayor and Council. Chris, can you pull that up for me?
There we go. Is that over there?
Oh, my gosh.
You might have to stand up there.
I got.
Put your glasses on.
Oh, my gosh. I might have. Um, I need, I can't, man, I can't see him.
Is that the one?
So the exciting world of jail bond. Um, but we really do want you to have information. So I'm here to tell you, uh, why and, uh, what's the impact on you and what have we done to avoid this really, uh, and to, and what led us here today. So I'll just get going while, uh, oh, I can do it now. Oh, man, this thing is not cooperating very well. Can you just start it for me? And then I could think I can take it from there. Okay. See how this goes. I may have to stand up. So, oh, it's gonna work. So Ada County's population, uh, I don't know if anybody's noticed the growth in Ada County in a while? So, uh, since 2010, the county of Ada has grown by about 38%. And it's predicted that by 2030, we'll have about 600,000 people living here in our county with us. So give you a little bit of timeline. And I'm going to try and run through this in the essence of time. So in 1977, uh, we built a jail over on Barrister and, uh, that, that jail still exists as part of our current jail. And back then, the population was 154,000 in Ada County. In 1995, 1993, we ran for that bond. And in 95, we added, um, a whole lot of beds to that jail. So it went from 160 to 560. And the population was 250-some thousand. That was in 95. In 03, we added, uh, another expansion, which was, uh, the largest between 95 and today. So it's 864 beds. And then we added another one in 07. And in 2013 was the last time we had a, a jail expansion. Uh, and the population had gone from 154 to 416 in 2013. So now we sit today at 544,000. And we have not done an expansion since 2013, which was not a lot of beds. The important thing to point out is that 1995, the jail infrastructure is run off of that 1995 jail infrastructure. You can see the difference in populations. You can see the difference in how many beds there are. So when we talk about a bond, people always say, well, you just want to add more beds. That is correct. We do want to add more beds, but we are also improving much of the infrastructure from 1995 to 2023. So that is a large chunk of this expansion. All right. I'm going to try something here. I'm going to try and play this little video. You'll love it. I'm a movie star, so. Make that bigger. I'll try and give you a little tour here, maybe. Chris, can you run that or no? Oh, hold on. You got it? I can click it, but it doesn't want to move around.
If it just.
Okay. If it doesn't play, it's not the end of the world.
I'm Sheriff Matt Clifford. We are county sheriff's office. Welcome to the jail.
That's the 1977 portion of the jail that you saw there. And, oh, I guess it's over.
Sally Port area, where we bring people by vehicle in, in the jail and then secure floors or like, uh, secure space, uh, out of the vehicle. This Sally Port is shared by all of the incoming agencies as well as our transport. We don't have enough room with all those cars clustered in there. We could outside, we could, uh, put them in cars there. Area where we do our pallets, this is where they'll have it down. Now we're going to move into our booking area. It's been the same since the 90s. And you've done what we can with it as far as we were using furniture and whatnot, but we don't have the ability to add any space. So this is the inmate property room. So if you're looking to the jail, we have a property text that will take all the property, package it up and get stored in this room. This, again, I started here 23 years ago. This room is the same size as it was in the 90s. And it is packed full of property. People's personal property. So we have to take care of it. So here's the kitchen. We feed 4,000 meals a day. Designed to feed about 1,000 meals a day, but we're doing the, what we can. We're now in the laundry. And inmates also run the laundry area. So over 2,500 of the laundry. So we don't send that out. It's not a job. We make two a year. So there are two different terms apart as capacity. You have rated capacity and you have operational capacity. So rated capacity, that's basically the count of all the toilets and all the things. You say you can have this many inmates stay in the jail. You get to rated capacity, it's already a bad. Well, we have to look at its operation, which is going to be underneath the rated capacity. Also called operational capacity, you have to keep beds in the jail open so we can move here and there. So the rated capacity for a jail is 1,160 beds. The operational capacity is 949 beds. Right now, overall, we're functioning over 970. Now, actually thankful for that because most days this year, we've been up over 1,000. As soon as you buckle out, we have to have safety, safety, security, all the types that start to increase. So this is our health services unit. So it's basically like a small hospital. One thing we don't do here is, uh, we have 24-hour nursing staff that, uh, distribute meds and monitor people's health. But we do have the ability to get outside of the facility. That will be there. So this is the warehouse space for 1,000 people. 4,000 meals a day. They've got toilet paper and soap for 1,000 people. It's a massive, full house. We have to find other places behind you. We have different items. As long as we're running out of space, we do the structure. Thank you for taking the tour of the jail.
Okay. Now let's see if I can get out of this. So you see, uh, operational capacity is 949. On that day, it was 970 in the jail. Today, it was 1,018, which is more normal. On 970 was a very low day. So we average about 1,000 inmates or so a day. Usually have about 11,000 bookings a year. Uh, the types of inmates that are in our jail are not going to be your low-level inmates. So we get a lot of opposition to stop arresting people for marijuana and petty theft and stacking them up in your jail. Those people do not exist in our jail. They just don't. And if they are in there, they're probably serving time for a week, like a day at a time on weekends. Um, yeah. Usually our jail hovers around 88% felonies, about 5% people that are actually serving time. So the jail population from when I started 23 years ago today is much different than, than it was then. It's, it's a much hardened population of people that we have determined through a lot of programs that need to be in our jail. So get that. All right. I could drive this now, I think. So how do we, that's the infrastructure. You saw the jail. We, that kitchen's built to feed 1,000 inmates a day. And we feed 4,000, uh, meals a day in there. Uh, same kitchen as when I started 23 years ago. Um, same booking area, same prop, uh, inmate property room, same jail warehouse. That jail warehouse is about 800 square feet. And our new one that we need to put in is 10,000 in order for us to make it efficient. Uh, we spend a lot of taxpayer money storing things off-site in seven different locations. And also you saw in the Sally Port, those, that's where police cars are supposed to park when they bring in arrestees. Instead, it's got copy paper and toilet paper and cup of soups. It's not where it's supposed to be. Um, we, it, but it's, in 1995, it was, it was sufficient. In 2023, um, it, it's a little more challenging. So how do we, what have we done to try and kind of, you know, avoid this bond, if you will? For about 15 years, Ada County Sheriff's Office has been pretty innovative in solutions on keeping the right people out. Uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the right people out of jail and the right people in jail. So, um, we have alternative sentencing. So your DUIs and your misdemeanor, um, you know, petty thefts and marijuana and things like that, they can do sentencing elsewhere outside the walls of the jail. So you see the sealed crew picking up trash on the side of the highway. That's one, just a fraction of what we offer for alternative sentencing. We have a community transition center, which is a center where people can serve their time during the night. And at daytime, they go to work. We help them find a job. We get them their GED. We do a lot for them. We, and we teach them classes and give them programming so that they can go to work, pay their taxes, pay their rent, and not have to sit in jail and lose everything in their life over whatever it is they did. Our misdemeanor probation is really hefty in Ada County. Um, we, uh, do a really great job of monitoring people when they, after they've been sentenced to make sure that they don't come back to our jail. We still hold them accountable, but, uh, we watch them outside the walls of the jail. Um, what's that last one on there? Uh, pre-trial. Pre-trial is, is an interesting one. So we can take people like DUIs. And it's not just DUIs. That's just a good example. And we can put them through a matrix in conjunction with the court and say, you know what? We can monitor these folks outside of jail through ankle monitoring or office visits, or you have to come in and, and, you know, have a breathalyzer at this time. A lot of different things to make sure we hold them accountable before they go to trial and they're not sitting in our jail taking up space where an armed robber should be sitting. Uh, we're going to skip this one in the essence of time. So the proposed project, uh, the land was purchased in December and we have it, uh, ready to go. We have the, uh, all of the, um, all the plans ready to go. And it would be a new booking and intake. Uh, you can imagine since 1995, there's a lot more traffic in and out of the jail. We take a lot more inmates to and from court. We, we, uh, take people, we take inmates in and out of the jail for doctors' appointments. So the booking intake area, um, it, it sees a lot more traffic. So down below, you'll see transport center in there. That will make things more efficient and safer for the public. And so we don't have to do, we don't have to do things with inmates outside the walls of the jail. They'll be secured inside the jail where we can put them in cars there and take them where they need to go. The kitchen, you've already heard me talk about the kitchen. We, we didn't need to drone on about that. The laundry in 2005 was the last time that was updated. And it's really not that much bigger from 23 years ago when I started. The new housing pod would be 294, 296 beds. Uh, and that will help us relieve. So there are, we have a lot of people that sleep on the floor right now. I don't know how many we have today, but I remember when I gave my budget presentation to the commissioners, we had 63 people sleeping on the floor in the jail. Um, and then of course, the warehouse I talked about and, um, new secure access for getting inmates in and out of the jail. Um, I talked about the land. It's already been, uh, been purchased. So here's the big one. What does it cost me as a taxpayer, right? You all have already voted on a bond last year. So bond is fresh on your mind. And you probably are thinking, well, why do I need another bond now? Well, we figured out that this will cost your, the taxpayer about $3.60 per $100,000 of assessed value on your home. So listening to presentations about the average house is valued here in Ada County, your average citizen will pay about $15 a year for this jail expansion. So the, the, uh, the election day is when, when it will be on the ballot, same as all the municipal races. And so if you, uh, want to express your opinion, that's going to be the day to do it for sure. There's, uh, there are a lot of ways to get more information on this. Go to ada-jailproject.org and it can walk you through all kinds of FAQs. Uh, there's an ability there to, uh, leave information for us. There's a survey in there that you can take. We've gotten some really good feedback from a couple thousand people in Ada County about what they think about the bond. Um, those that say, I don't really know, or I don't like the bond, uh, they literally just need information and want information. So, uh, if you have, if you have questions, you go to ada-jailproject.org and it will give you a lot of that info. And you can always contact us through our website, uh, the ada sheriff.org website. And we will get back to you with answers on, uh, what you need to make your decision. Again, we can't advocate for it, but, uh, we can give you the information you need to make your decision. And then this is all of those things that I, I went over with you and a little bit more. The, the cost of the facility is about $69 million. However, we have already purchased the land, already have the plans drawn up. And the commissioners have, uh, have been setting aside money year after year for a jail building fund. And they have found enough money to make it so it's only $49 million for the bond. So 69 million, about 20 million is going to be covered, uh, so that you don't have to. And it is a 30-year bond. 20? Oh, 20. I did that last night, too. I'm sorry. It's a 20-year bond. 20. The same guy who corrected me. Um, so that is the end of my presentation. I would welcome any questions at the end of, uh, of our session here. And I will have some handouts for folks to take. So you can also look and have something in your hand to read. And it will point you in the direction of some of those other materials as well.
All right. Well, thank you, Sheriff. And, uh, keep your questions and we'll have a, a question-and-answer period at the end of this, uh, this, this meeting. But, uh, so the sheriff will answer every question that you may have about the, the need for jail and the tax, the tax implications and so forth. But right now, we have a very special presentation for the, uh, for you all in, in, in Kuna. And we wanted to, as we're, as we're going around, we, we had a, a joint meeting with another city earlier and we're, we're trying to do that a little more often. And we appreciate the, uh, the hospitality of the, of Mayor Stern and the, and the council. And, uh, we thought it'd be, it'd be nice because a lot of people drive by the Bernie Fisher Park up here. And maybe not a lot of people, because you've had a lot of people move into this community in the last few years, haven't you? And maybe not everyone knows who is Bernie Fisher. And we wanted people to recognize and understand that there's a local hero. And that's, and that's Bernie Fisher. And, uh, he has something that, uh, is not very common. And, uh, his son Brad is here and will ta, give you a little in, information about his father Bernie. Brad? And other family members as well. Yeah. Anywhere you want, Brad.
Well, should, they probably should go to the podium.
You might want to go to the podium so you can.
So they can get it on the reference.
Oh, well, you can move it around. Just stand, just stand in front and the, uh, there you go.
There's just some courts over here, so I don't want anybody to turn around.
We appreciate you being here, Brad. Well, I, I'm glad to be here. I'm a long-time Kuna resident. You guys talk about. To be, um, I have to say, I, I, I just wanted to thank the leadership of the city and the leadership of our good county and all of the other leaders for, uh, recognizing my father in this way. He's, he's somebody that we recognize in our family. We sure love him a lot. And we miss him. And, uh, so I'm just going to tell you a little bit about him and about, uh, his family. Um, my dad was born in California while, um, my grandparents were there working on a movie project, as I, as I remember this. So they were kind of, uh, in Hollywood at that time. And my dad was, uh, was born there while my grandfather was a carpenter building stage sets and things for cowboy movies back in.
building stage sets and things for cowboy movies back in the, back in the twenties. And they moved back to Utah where they were from. And then my dad graduated, well, he almost graduated from college, from high school, not quite. He, the World War II started, and so he, before, he was able to have an early leave from high school and go join, join the Navy. So that's what he did. And so he was in the Navy at the beginning of World War II. And he wanted to fly airplanes. And as a listed Navy person, he was trained as a gunner in an airplane, in one of the, one of the airplanes. Not much different than this one he flew in Vietnam. They had big propellers on it. But anyway, he was in the Navy for a short time. And then when he came back out of the Navy, his family had moved to Kuna. And his, and so he came to Kuna, and it's a good thing, because he found my mother there. And my mother's, my mother was raised on, out here south and, and west of Kuna, out here on, near the county line there, near, near the Canyon County line. And so they got married, and my dad went to Boise State Junior College. And he went there for a while, and my mom was in training before that. She had been trained as a nurse in Boise. And so after he had been in, he was on the GI Bill. And so after he went to, you know, BSU, Junior College, then, then he moved down to Utah and continued to University of Utah and got, he was in the Air Force, ROTC program, got a flying slot. And from that point on, he did a lot of training. And so he was a fighter pilot. And he flew jets after he got trained as that, and that, and we lived all over the place. I have, I, I was born in Salt Lake, and my next brother Courtney, he was born in Williams Air Force Base. He, he wasn't at the base, he was born at Tucson. But, but, but they were in training in Arizona. Then my next brother, Rob, he was born in Florida, in more training. And then I had another brother born in Chicago area. That was his first actual combat ready unit, and that was at O'Hare Field there. And then, and then I had another brother born in Great Falls, Montana. And then, well, from there, we went to, we moved to Florida. And, and that was a time when the, Cuba was probably kind of a hot place. And my dad was a hot fighter pilot. He flew what was called the F-104 Starfighter. And if anybody's seen that plane, it looks like a rocket ship. Has, has wings, it's seven feet wide, a little wider than me on each side. And it's about longer than from, well, as long as this room, these two rooms together. And it would go fast, it'd go really fast. And so that, that was what was down there, keeping MiGs coming in, out of, coming into the United States, out of southern Florida. And then the war was going on in Vietnam, and so he volunteered to go train Vietnamese pilots, is what he trained, volunteered. And so he became part of a group that was learning to fly. He went and flew this plane over here, it's called an A-1E Skyraider. It's a Navy plane, and the Air Force is using it. That plane there, even though it's only got one engine on it, it would carry more weight in bombs and stuff than a B-17 would. And it would fly eight hours over a battlefield. So it was, and they could put a whole bunch of protection underneath it, so it was a really good plane for Vietnam. But he was over there, and it, and it didn't seem like training Vietnamese pilots was too good a place to train them in Vietnam with all the stuff that was going on around them. So they, so they changed their role, they became, they became actual, not so much instructors, as they, they became pilots that were going out and fighting in the war. And that was in like nineteen sixty-four. In nineteen sixty-four, when he went that way, our family came back to Kuna. We lived in a house out here on Stewart's Dairy. Does anybody know where Stewart's Dairy is? Maybe the old timers would sure know where it is. But that was, that was the, we lived in a house out there, and, and I went to high school here. And of course, at that time, Kuna wasn't as big as Meridian, it was about half as big as Meridian. And Meridian, I think, had about two thousand people in it. And we had a lot, you know, if you counted all the farms and stuff, we had, had about a thousand people. So, and then, so from Vietnam, he landed, he, he was in, he was in Vietnam doing battles and, you know, fighting and stuff. And he was in a, won battle that they were having in a valley called Ashaw. And Ashaw is, is a, is an area where the North Vietnamese were coming down through Laos. So they weren't coming through Vietnam, they were coming through Laos, and we weren't supposed to go into Laos. So they would bring their, all their supplies and stuff, and then they would have to come down through this pass in Ashaw Valley. That was a good way to get into the rest of South Vietnam. And so this, the special forces built this fort right there, about two miles from the Laotian border. And it made it difficult for the, for the Vietnamese to do the things they had been doing. And so they decided they were gonna get rid of this camp. And there's about two thousand regular North Vietnamese that were operating in that area. And so they had a battle, and there's about fifteen Americans in this, special forces in this camp. About a hundred and, well, there were several hundred other supporting groups. There was non-mercenaries and other people. But anyway, it wasn't, it wasn't a very fair fight, because they were, they were well outnumbered. And in this battle, the first, the first day the battle started, they were trying to find a way to help the people that were down in this valley. And my dad was flying around with a whole bunch of people trying, well, it was cloudy, and they're in the mountains, hard to find a way down. He found a little hole through the clouds, got down, and the cloud covers about two hundred feet high. It's not very high, flying through with mountains on either side of you. But he got down in there, and he weighed, made a pass over the camp, and, and found out where they were doing, what they were doing. And him and his wingman, they went back up through this camp, the, up in this hole, and they notified everybody that was trying to get down there, and they just formed a little thing that was circle. And these people had come down through the clouds without any, any visibility. They couldn't tell where they're going, they're just following these radio signals, get down, and then they go through, and they, they stopped the, they stopped the camp from being overrun by being down there. Well, that first day, he, he was down there about two hours working in this valley. And this valley is about six miles long, and about, I can't remember how wide it is, maybe a mile wide. One of the pilots that was down there said it was like when you're flying down there. He said it's like flying in Yankee Stadium with everybody throwing stuff at you while you're going through, you know, shooting at you and stuff. He said it was just really small. So anyway, the camp didn't fall that day, but they went home and they figured it failed that night. And so the next day, he takes off and he goes with a, a brand-new pilot. And so they go out on an easy, easy assignment, and they go somewhere to support a, a group. Well, they, they get over there and they get a call saying, we need pilots over at Ashaw Valley again. And so he takes this brand-new pilot, and they go down there, and there's all sorts of people, all sorts of aircraft, trying to get in there to help support this camp. Well, he's the, he's the one that found it again, he found that hole, and he went down, and he went down and he went back up, and he grabbed the attention of four other airplanes, him and his, and so all six of them went down the valley. And they, the camp was just about ready to be overrun, and they, because they, because of that first pass where they were shooting and dropping, and they, they stopped that, they stopped it right there. But in the meantime, one of the pilots was shot down, his name was Jump Myers. And so this group, they decided, my dad decided, they're gonna pick him up. And that's, I won't go into all the details, but that's what he did. He landed, he landed and picked this guy up in the middle of a battle. And there was, you have to think, the, the runway was a thousand feet shorter than you're supposed to land this plane on, but he had been given bad information when he asked how long the runway is. And the runway had been mortared, and you got planks of steel up all over the place. You can imagine what happens when a mortar hits into some of that steel planking for the runway. It was big shards, so he had to kind of maneuver around all that stuff as he's trying to land, not to lose a tire or something like that. And anyway, after a second try, he taxi down to where this guy was hiding, hiding in a ditch. And the guy ran over him, climbed up on the back of the plane, with some difficulty, because they didn't want to slow the propeller down too much and stall right there in the middle. But they land, pulled the guy into this, into the plane and took off. And they went back, and they thought he had been seriously injured, seriously burned, because he'd been in this plane and it exploded on landing on its belly tank. But he wasn't too bad, he just got lost in eyebrows and a few other things like that. Smelled pretty smoky. But they went back to the hospital and delivered him. And then about a year later, we went, we went to see President Johnson over there. President Johnson gave him the Congressional Medal of Honor. And so if anybody wants to look at it, it's, there's one right out there. And I've also got a, some of the stories have had a little, a lot more detail than what I was telling you here. We just want you to know that we, we love Kuna, we've been here a long time. We live, I live out on my dad's farm, which she bought from my grandfather, and we've been living there a long time. I don't do, I don't do the farming, because that takes too much experience, expertise. I'm a, I'm a dentist and it works in the area here. But, but I do, we do love Kuna, and we're glad that we came here, went to school, and raised our kids here, too. So I, I just wanted to introduce my brothers and their family. So if you guys can all stand up, and you can see Scott there, this is him right here. He's, he's a lot older now. Scott, Scott was a fighter pilot, too. So is my other brother over here, Steve, he's a, he was a pilot as well, he's still a pilot. And anyway, we're.
And I was born in Germany.
Yeah.
I'm in the picture, but I'm behind the picture frame there somewhere.
Anyway, so we, we thank you for the talk, too, this honor, appreciate you letting us come. I was gonna say. We, we really appreciate Joe Steer, he was, oh, Rob, yes, Rob, did you want to tell about yourself, Rob?
I'm, I'm, I'm just as zippy as, as they all are, but I'm not.
Thanks, Rob.
After living in Boise, I, I consider, here's my second home, but for a long time I considered my home. Loving here, loving people here. And I did remember, earlier, when I was younger, driving into town, we'll sign up, let's see, any, any Kuna population, twenty-three oh six. And four months.
I was gonna say, these are our kids. Tony and Robbie both flew with Drapoff, they were little kids, two years old, three years old. And then since we have these young kids, and they came up from Utah.
Yeah, we're. Appreciate you asking.
We were surprised about the traffic jam as well. That's true, but we made it.
Great.
Anybody else have a comment? I was gonna say, we appreciate Joe Steer, because when my dad's house burned down, a long time ago, before the turn of the millennium, the Steers were part of that firefighting group that was out there fighting hard on it. I know that one of them got hurt, it was probably Joe.
Well, I got a year off of work.
Anyway, it was, we appreciate his, his help on our family.
All right, well, thank you, Brad, appreciate.
You don't even know this.
Yeah.
But your wife was my family homey and your sister, that DUI.
No, she mentioned that to me, she wanted me to tell you hi.
Christ, be careful.
Yeah, she wanted me to tell you hi, anyway. No, thank you, thank you, Brad. And we have prepared a proclamation, the county has, and, and, and when, when we, we haven't passed it yet, but we're going to pass it right now, tonight. I will read the proclamation, and then we will, we will pass the proclamation, and we'll, and we'll, we'll give it to you at the conclusion of the meeting. The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation. Bernie Fisher Day, October fourth. Whereas on March tenth, nineteen sixty-six, during the Vietnam War, the United States Special Forces camp at Ashaw was under attack by two thousand North Vietnamese Army regulators. And whereas other hostile troops had surrounded the camp and were continuously raking it with automatic weapons fire from the surrounding hills. And whereas the tops of the, of the fifteen-hundred-foot hills were obscured by an eight-hundred-foot ceiling, limiting aircraft maneuverability and forcing pilots to operate within hostile, hostile gun positions. And whereas Major Bernard Fisher announced his intention to land on the airstrip and effect a rescue of his fellow airmen. Although aware of the extreme danger and likely failure of such an attempt, he elected to continue. And whereas Major Fisher's profound concern for his fellow airmen, and at the risk of his life above and beyond the call of duty, are the highest traditions of the United States Air Force and reflect great credit upon himself and the armed forces of his country. And whereas Bernard Francis Fisher, known to his family and friends as Bernie Fisher, was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor in nineteen sixty-seven by President Lyndon Johnson for conspicuous gallantry at the risk of his life during the Vietnam War. And whereas the Congressional Medal of Honor is the highest military award, honor awarded to members of the United States Armed Services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ada County Commissioners, in recognition of this valiant act and distinguished service to the United States of America, do hereby proclaim October the fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Bernie Fisher Day. I'll accept the motion to approve the, the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the motion to declare today, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Bernie Fisher Day in Ada County.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of declaring October fourth Bernie Fisher Day in Ada County, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your family, and thank you, thank you for the, for the gallantry and heroism of your father. We appreciate that, and we, we, we wanted to, the citizens of Ada County to know that we had a, a genuine hero in Kuna. And your family, and you, you should be proud of your father, as I'm sure you are.
And this is a very rare thing, and it's not, not, very many people get the Congressional Medal of Honor.
I think we researched it, and I think we found one other person in the state of Idaho that's been awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor, I think. I could be wrong on that, but I believe that there's been one other. But anyway, that's a, it's a distinct, it's a great honor for the, for the citizens of commu, uh, citizens of Kuna, and it's a great honor for the citizens of Ada County. And that's why we're awarding, making this day a proclamation, Bernie Fisher Day. So anyway, thank you. Now, we have an official proclamation we're going to give to the family. We'll give you, we'll give that to you at the conclusion of this, of this meeting. But now we're.
And a flag.
And a flag.
And a flag, yes, we have a flag for you. Yeah.
Flown over the courthouse.
Flown over the courthouse. Now it's time for our question and answer. Is there any questions for anything we've discussed? I'm sure somebody has some questions for the sheriff.
I do not have a question, I'm just rotating this stuff.
Well, go ahead, you can ask. Any questions for our clerk, or the sheriff, or any one of us? Because here we are, we're ready to take your questions. Go ahead.
Great question. The land is located right behind the jail, between the connector and the jail. It was owned by Dairy Gold, and we purchased, when I say we, it's Ada County, purchased land next to Dairy Gold years ago. And so they needed our land, and we needed theirs. So we did a land swap and got, got it all approved last December.
It closes in December, and it's going to be, to allow the current jail to be connected right to the, the expansion.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, any other questions from any of the discussion that we've had, from the, from the budget, to the, the vehicle registration, to any of the, any of the processes?
And you need to know that there is information on our. And, and you need to know that there is information on our website, as the sheriff indicated, uh, and the budget, uh, on, on the Ada County website, so if you want detailed information, that, it's there, and if you have questions, you can submit it to us, and we will, we'll answer them, uh, as well, so you, even if you, remember after the meeting, you have questions, you can submit it to us and we'll answer them.
I could just point out, you know, the commissioners inspect the Ada County Jail, uh, about four times a year, we do a surprise inspection, and, uh, I give a lot of credit to the sheriff and his jail team, it's a very well-run facility, you know, everyone's kinda used to seeing, uh, movies or TV shows about jail and what horrible places they are, Ada County's, uh, strikes me as very safe, very clean, um, very well-run, it looks like they're, they're being good stewards of, of the tax dollars down there, um, one thing we have to deal with is, you know, a lot of mental illness that, that happens in the jail, and we have a, a large nursing staff that deals with that as well, but, um, yeah, I, uh, you know, obviously, nobody likes to, um, um, you know, raise taxes or, or think about government spending, but after doing a lot of tours of the jail and getting the information, um, getting the, we get daily, uh, inmate reports at Ada County, so we know, ever since we got elected, every single day, the jail's largely been over capacity, um, so it's not something that, uh, obviously, we wanna do, but, um, with the growth, that, that was one of the reasons why I decided to, um, you know, allow voters to weigh in, so, it's, it's really up to the community to decide if, if this is something they want to do, uh, and go into debt, needs a two-thirds vote, so the community really has to come together to, to get this done, but I think if you look at the information and study the issue for yourself, um, you'll probably come to the same conclusion that we did as well.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, anyone from the, the mayor, or the, any of the city council would like to make any kind of a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, so I'd ju- I'd just like to say, you know, we, uh, we contract with the Ada County Sheriff's Department for our police department, and, um, I'm gonna say that's the most valuable cooperation, uh, that I've ever been involved with, uh, we get so much value from that, uh, I, I think it's very important for community safety and for the safety of our officers, uh, for there be a proper facility to take, uh, people that need to go there, and, uh, I just, I, I just really appreciate that cooperation and, and that partnership.
Yes, and it's something we're proud of in, in, in Ada County, we have a, a spirit of cooperation with all the six cities, and, and particularly with, uh, with Kuna, where our sheriff's department is able to provide the policing that, that, that you need, and we, and we, we do appreciate the partnership, and, of course, now, we're, we're partnering up with our EMS and your fire department, which is also another good, good, uh, partnership a, a, as well, how about, uh, council members, would you like to say?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, it's, it's just been a pleasure to work in the city of Kuna with your officers and see them out patrolling, uh, the, the new, uh, Harleys out here have been a big hit with, uh, speeders, I see them frequently, and, uh, but it, it's helped curb a lot of speeding and, and a lot of traffic issues we have, I mean, a bunch of amateurs couldn't make it out here on time, but that's your own fault, at least you weren't speeding, uh, but anyways...
We didn't have Harleys, we didn't have Harleys.
You didn't have your Harleys, well, that's unfortunate, but no, it's been, it's been great, um, I'm also involved with the fire district and, uh, work closely with Chief Lawrence and, uh, Chief Rain from back in the day as being a firefighter as well, and, and the, the, you know, the camaraderie that those guys have down there now, and it's not a our turf versus yours, we're all in the same sandbox for the good of the community, and it's, it's really satisfying to see the, the great partnerships we have built and over the years with the county, the, the EMS, a- and the sheriff's office and everyone, and I hope this just continues and gets bigger and better as time goes on, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't be me if I didn't ask a tough question, um, so, we spoke about Kuna paying for a bond recently, um, most of our constituents talk about the cost of, of taxes, so what is the takeaway for those who may say, these people are just getting in trouble, or these, you know, going into jail, why do I have to go and pay more for my taxes, I'm not getting in trouble, cause it's a, the threshold is three-quarters, that, that's, that's a tough threshold to get, to hit, um, even for, for, for fire, which is right here, so, so I guess, what is, what is it that I can take to my constituents and say, this is why?
It's two-thirds, actually.
Or two-thirds, I'm sorry, yeah, sixty-seven.
I think you can say that the primary, one of the primary purposes of government is, is safety and protection, and, uh, we put, the people that are in jail because they deserve to be there, and they're either ordered there by, by a judge, uh, after a jury has convicted them, or they're there waiting trial for something that's been, that's been, that's happened to them, and we want the community to be safe, and maybe the sheriff could, could, could enter in on that.
Chairman, yeah, I, this is a fantastic question, because that's what, why, why the jail is way down in Boise, how does that affect the citizens of Kuna, why should I have to pay for it, well, there are a lot of reasons, you're all taxpayers, you're all county taxpayers, and, uh, a safe jail is, a secure jail is a safe jail, um, and that means for inmates and deputies, there are a lot of answers to this question, all, a real simple one, and when you have a jail that is, um, over capacity and not running efficiently, you run into a lot of other problems with inmate-on-inmate violence and inmate-on, on deputy violence, and maybe you don't care the drug dealer punched an armed robber in the nose, but you're gonna pay for it, your taxes pay for the medical bills of those people, and quite frankly, we are the stewards of, of safety, whether it's in the jail or outside the jail, and so, the fact that you have a safe jail in your county helps you here in the city of Kuna with, uh, ironically, we're talking about a bond, and I'm talking about keeping your taxes down all of a sudden, but, but, your taxpayer money can go to other things besides paying for somebody's broken nose, and that's a very simplistic view of it, but, um, you know, crime does happen in Kuna, and, uh, there are, uh, a lot of ways that Kuna does utilize the jail, um, and there are a lot of ways that the sheriff's office helps some of the ci- the citizens of Kuna stay out of jail, so, uh, I think that's your question, right, like, why, why would the, why would constituents in Kuna care about people that are in the jail, right?
Yes, sir, um, we also expect that there's probably gonna be another school bond coming up, right, probably around the same time, and so...
Sure.
It's gonna be potentially a tough sell.
Sure, oh, I know.
But it's, it's important, but that's, that's something that needs to be, uh, communicated very well, of the benefits, which, you know, is explained.
Sure, yeah, and when you have, you know, like I said, on the day of the, when we gave the presentation, our bond, or not bond, our, uh, our, uh, budget presentation, there are sixty-some people sleeping on the floor in little plastic cots, um, you know, you worry about, you worry about safety, you worry about litigation, um, and all of those things cost money, and, uh, the more we're litigated and the more we have to, uh, pay for medical bills, or, uh, deputies out of work because they're injured, all of those things add up fast, so it's better to have a good, safe jail, uh, that's being run properly, I thank you, Commissioner Davidson, for speaking of that, so we can be the stewards of, of public safety, like I said, inside the walls of the jail and outside.
Well, and it should also be, uh, be noted that the cost is going to be, uh, relatively small, the tax cost, cause it's spread out throughout the whole county, and, uh, we've done a, I think, a fairly good job of, of our, of stewardship, uh, the actual expansion will run into the mid-sixties, sixty-eight or sixty-nine thousand, something like that, million, excuse me, a million, but it's, uh, but the, uh, the actual bond amount is forty-nine million, and when you spread that out throughout the whole county, it's, it's, it's about three dollars and sixty cents per taxable value of every home, so in other words, the average homeowner in all of Ada County will pay less than, right around fifteen dollars a year, that's a pretty small price to pay for safety, and that's all we're looking for.
Should, uh, point out, Ada County's record, we have no outstanding bonds at the moment, we have no indebtedness right now, I think we've been pretty good stewards and, uh, of the tax dollars and not been, uh, you know, greedy, trying to stack a bunch of bonds on the people, so, other jurisdictions may have multiple bonds out, but Ada County, uh, this will be our only bond, and, uh, we tried to keep it as low as, as we could get it, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we, uh, and it took a long time to come to this decision, the, the board really, um, discussed it quite a bit and, and put a lot of thought into it, and we chose the option that needs the most community support to pass, um, so, again, it's, it's really up to the community, and, I, you know, the big talking point we get is, we don't wanna be Portland or Seattle, you know, that's, I think every government jurisdiction in, in Idaho is, you know, that's become our mantra, cause we see, you know, what those cities have become, uh, we're next in line in the, you know, the Pacific Northwest, um, the up-and-coming big city, and I think if we don't wanna go down that same route, you probably have to invest a little bit upfront, so that you don't have these massive costs of social spending and crime that, uh, those other two cities are having.
Yeah, and, Mr. Davidson, if I, if I may, Chairman...
Sure, go ahead.
To kinda build off of that, and, another great point is, you know, we, we also don't wanna have a jail that's packed so full that we're telling our officers, hey, there's no room at the end here, we, we, you've, you've got to really tone it down, we really want proactive police, and that means in Kuna, um, if any of you under, know any of the Kuna police officers, they're very proactive, I, I think all of you've noted that, and we wanna keep it that way, so we don't become some, like, some of these other cities where, well, we, we, there's nowhere to put them, so why would we go look for them, or, or have someone discouraged to be proactive in your community, so, it means more proactive policing for Kuna, really, in the long run.
Yeah, thank you, all right, any, any other questions on, uh, the jail or any other, yes, go ahead.
I'll come to the front of the mic.
Oh, sure.
So, it was talked about, uh, the medical, uh, you know, worried about the medical and possible litigation of either, you know, uh, prisoner on prisoner violence, or prisoner on deputy violence, but then there's also the issue of, of, uh, medicalness, medical needs of prisoners, whether it's, uh, uh, because they're, they incur an injury, you know, and being arrested, or what, whatever it might be, but there's also, uh, medical necessary medicines that are required of, of the individuals who might, uh, end up in the, in the jail, and as an example, um, I can, I can speak, not really firsthand, cause I haven't been, don't intend to, not going to, but, uh, um, I know of one particular individual that I'm related to that is actually currently there, he has to have medicine, specific medicine, that his doctors have prescribed, went through all the tests, went through all the labs, uh, have tried this medicine or that medicine, and he's been given specific medicine because he's got things like Hashimoto's, uh, syndrome, which is a, which is an autoimmune deficiency, uh, issue, among other things, and when they are put into that, uh, situation, you can take down, take their medicines to them, of course, they don't accept the medicines, the medicines that are brought from the outside are not allowed on the inside, and I can understand that, because it's easily made and could be something else, but they go through a verif- verification process, it's supposed to take twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and I can speak to this individual who I talked to yesterday, who's been in, uh, since Thursday, nothing has been done, he needs the medicines every single day, and it hasn't happened, and, in one case, they tried to change his medicines without consulting a doctor, without, uh, without checking his labs, without going over his patient history, that is medical malpractice, and it is happening in Ada County Jail, I know that it is happening there, cause I know the individual that it's happening to, and that needs to be addressed, that it not only is done in a very timely manner, I can understand a day or two to verify the medications and whatnot, then to try to change the medication on the individual, um, or to not even give it to him, which in this case, he's not been given, uh, that is unacceptable, and if we're worried about the medical conditions of our prisoners, the inmates there, that is something that needs to be a priority that is not being looked at, and it's usually a minor issue with most inmates, but there are some that do require that, so, I hope you will look into that, do something about that, because that is inappropriate, that is medical malpractice, and that is an opportunity for litigation, for, you know, a tort claim against the county that taxpayers are gonna have to, you know, would have to fund, and I know there's more than one, because I know one other individual, and it's, I know it's coming down the pike for you guys, so, something to look at.
Well, thank you, Mr. Law, uh, you have a couple of people here that can maybe, uh, maybe speak to that, and I, I can't speak to the individual case, cause I'm not, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of it, but we do, we are required by law to inspect the jail every quarter, and we do that, and it's an unannounced inspection, we check out the medical, uh, area, cause there's a, like, a little hospital there, we have, uh, lots of nurses, we have a dentist that comes in every week, uh, to keep the, the prisoners, uh, healthy as, as could be, uh, but I don't know about that sp- that specific i- issue, but you might wanna talk to the sheriff or the, uh, his lawyer here later to get the, or whoever it is, the, the specific needs that, uh, that, cause I can understand, there's a thousand people in the jail or thereabouts today, and, and there may be, there may be something falling through the cracks, I really don't know.
And I can tell you that I attempted that, and I was blown off, so...
Well, well, they're here now, so you can talk now, you can, you can visit with them now, right now, later after the meeting's over, thank you for your, uh, thank you.
And, and of course, any citizen can always email the, the commissioners, um, concerns about any other department, uh, any other elected department, we're in charge of general supervision of the county, so we can always, uh, investigate stuff that comes to us and try to remedy the situation.
Absolutely, thank, thank you for your bringing it up to our, to our attention, and we'll try to take, take, uh, take that into consideration with our, with the sheriff and, uh, and his lawyer, uh, are any other questions or issues before we, uh, wrap this meeting up, any other questions, or, cause we'd like...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Might I just take one second?
Go ahead.
Uh, given the fact that we just declared today Bernie Fisher Day.
Yes, we did, and you're a fighter pilot, retired fighter pilot.
With his family here, if, if I might, uh, I was a cadet a long time ago at the Air Force Academy, I was in the thirty-seventh squadron, which was the Sky Raiders, and, uh, we had to know everything about Bernie Fisher, as he was one of the best Sky Raider pilots ever was, I knew he flew a lot, uh, he was a great pilot, he was a no-nonsense, do the right thing kinda guy, and I had the opportunity later on to meet him several times and, uh, become close with him, uh, but there was one thing that I learned from him that took away from him, that I used in my career, as a fighter pilot for twenty years, I never took off without saying a prayer, and, uh, Bernie taught me that, uh, and, uh, that bode well for me for my twenty years in the Air Force, so, thank you to your father for getting me through twenty years.
Thank you, Trent, yeah, thank you, yeah, we're fortunate to have a retired fighter pilot amongst our, amongst our crew in, in Ada County, thank you, is there any other questions before we, uh, adjourn the meeting? Go to the presentation first, yeah, yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I di- I just wanna thank you for, uh, come, taking the time and coming out here tonight and, uh, making these presentations, and, um, we, we look forward to doing it some more often.
Absolutely, well, before we adjourn the meeting, we want, we have a presentation for the Fisher family, we have, and we'll do that right now, if you wanna come down here, we may, we may get a picture or two. Y'all, we have a, we have proclamation that we, uh, passed tonight, and, you guys, you guys, Mayor, come on up, yeah, you guys, uh, come on up here, we think we have our...
I didn't do my hair.
Come on up here.
I think it looks good.
All the picture cam, come on up here.
I don't hear Rob.
Yeah, come on, yeah, get over here, there, here.
All of them.
Get up here, everybody, come up here.
Good thing we had a picture camera here to give a shout.
All right, are we ready? On behalf of citizens of Ada County, if you wanna, if you wanna, yes, right, on behalf of citizens of Ada County, I want to give you a flag, it was specially, uh, flown over the, uh, Ada County Door House, in commemoration of your father and your grandfather, and the, and we have a proclamation that we just read and it's been signed by the three county commissioners, so here's the proclamation. And here is the, here's the flag. Congratulations.